We move on now to our council time agenda, which it is 10:25. We have an agenda that is posted. And we have at the conclusion of that, three different work sessions. So how about if let us begin on that? First is the public comment, which is on posted agenda items only. Are there members of the public, either in the hearing room or online, that you see staff who are wishing to speak?
Yes, Chair, we do have one online caller. Please go ahead.
Yes, good morning. This is Kimberly Goheen Elba, and life citizen of Clark County, Washington, USA. Hey, on my fishing pole, we've got a 40-pounder trying to bring it in for the last 20 minutes. So I'm pretty excited. I'm going to be speaking on agenda. I'll ask not be cut off. As far as the railroads and jobs, I say take care of the railroad employees that I already know that are complaining about their pay and their vacation. There's something going on with the railroad system as we speak. Let's not funnel monies to the bigwigs in the railroad system. Let's take care of our employees as they are already. Also, the man said that he'd put most offensive situations in the middle of somewhere with buffers all around. So I'm asking citizens, they've got to get up on this, what's going on here. As far as the bridge, back in your August 2nd minutes, that's on agenda also I'll be speaking on, you put that, on that particular day, you did not sign the letter, you were going to redraft it, and now you're going to be in support of the bridge. You mentioned a little bit about three bridges, which I agree with, and then you mentioned nothing more about it. I want you to serve the people. We don't want light rail. We don't want tolls. And I am all for the railroads, by the way, just take care of our employees that we have So your capital plan is using hard-earned tax dollars and unlimited funding stream, that's what I'm calling it, and it is a Marxist in nature. And you do not follow the Constitution, and you do follow the United Nations agenda that is brought forth by the unelected county manager, Kathleen Otto, and her unelected staff, which includes all of her. The citizens of Clark County, Washington must be aware that, in my opinion, this particular parks and land use is not beneficial to the citizens, but will connect, again, it will connect our local government here, which is a United Nations follower, and our free space, our parks, and our forests to the United Nations agendas, of which this council follows, for land use. My duty is to serve God, family, and country, and Clark County, Washington citizens must get more involved with this council and tell them to follow the Constitution as we voted you into office to do so. Not all counties follow the twisted form of government, as does a major city of a United Nations member, Vancouver City Council, follow the United Nations, and here in the Clark County Council and Board of Health, which are one and the same council members. And I also find that disturbing and unconstitutional, to say the least. Speaking to the minutes of August 2nd, Kathleen Otto cut me off on an open public comment.
That includes your time, and I turn to staff for the involvement of any wishes to speak. That is it. Okay, thank you very much. So we turn to old business, minutes for August 2nd. Is there a motion for approval?
Thank you. I move approval of the minutes.
Thank you. Second?
I second that.
Second.
Very good. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is passed. Now we go to the interstate bridge replacement letter. Kathleen, would you lead the discussion on this?
Of course. So this is coming back to council from last week's discussion. This is in support of a grant that's being applied for. There was an email sent out in which Chair Bowerman had provided some edits to the letter. Councilor Mevage also provided edits, and I believe we just forwarded a comparison of the two documents to all the councils, so you can see what the changes actually were, and we council pulled that up. So this is just seeing if council wants to move forward with this letter, with how it's currently drafted, I would say with Councilor Mevage's edits, just so that it incorporates the council's desire. Staff, can you pull up the one with the edits? Okay, they're working on it.
And what do you mean, Kathleen, that it includes the council's desire?
I guess this is to get direction from council on whether or not you would like to send this letter to the Secretary of Transportation.
Oh, sure. I see what you're saying. Thank you.
Yes, and so this, what you see in front of you now on the screen, and for those councillors here in the room, we gave you a hard copy as well. This takes the original letter, that Chair Bowerman updated it, and compared it to Councilor Mevage's edits. So the edits that you see are comprehensive of Councilor Mevage's input as well.
Counselor, I am Mevage. I'm looking for your statement or crossing out whatever you did on light rail, and I'm not seeing that. Could you point to that, please?
I think she is asking about where the light rail is referred to in the letter, which I believe is in the third paragraph.
Yes, it's the first page, Chair. First page, third paragraph.
Last line.
Chair.
I need just a quick second here. Saying vain, if that light rail should be treated separately. Yes, Counselor, again?
Yeah, I was just going to say, it's my understanding that we've missed the deadline to submit this letter anyway. Is there a way for us to verify this? Because this work may not be ultimately necessary anyway.
There are still a number of letters that are being submitted. For example, I know of 64, I think it was, that were submitted yesterday. So the volume of communications coming into the secretary continues to increase. The extent to which they are considered, you know, it's just as much of a mystery for letter number five as it is for letter number 50. It is so voluminous, what they are receiving. I know that doesn't answer your question, but a hard and fast deadline is probably not something that is guiding our submission or not. I am, let alone comfortable with that third paragraph last sentence that you point to. I'm inclined, actually, not to support that, and either go back to what the Bowerman letter had, or just say, how about if we just let it be, and at this time, don't respond, knowing that hundreds of people before us already have? What are your thoughts?
Madam Chair, may I make a comment? So I appreciate the efforts in both of us in rewriting the original letter that three of us did not support. Because of our prior positions, our prior resolutions, we're clearly in conflict with some of the, where the project is right now, having completely morphed and expanded from its original beginnings. I think we should sign a letter. You know, this kind of process, we try to avoid doing it in public, and usually, in the past, it's been a policy advisor that's done all the rights and rewriting based on the input of different councillors. So I don't want to focus too much on this today publicly. It's kind of making the sausage. But what I want to highlight, the differences really for me, because I don't want to get into wordsmithing, because each of us would write these words differently, and of course, too, we're happy with the original letter that identity Clark County had presented. And there is no deadline. So the first paragraph, I like that last line that I added, because it adds national interest. It's pretty much what drew our Federal Transportation Department to the Waschugle issue on BNSF, because it was a national corridor for rail that was bisecting Waschugle. I mean, he highlighted in his comments, our senator did as well. So that last line really draws attention, because we have tremendous river traffic. We have tremendous rail traffic. We have airports. And then, obviously, the highway traffic that's so congested right now, that impacts freight mobility. It's on a strategic corridor. The national government needs to pay more attention. So that's why I wanted to add that line, because it highlights it. Likewise, with the second paragraph, the last line, it really gets to the heart of what we're seeing. You know, the proposed project won't solve these issues. And again, the national government, because this is such a strategic corridor, needs to pay more attention. It needs to give some adult supervision and focus more on congestion, resiliency, and freight mobility. I rewrote your third paragraph, and I'm not sure what your objection is to the mention of light rail. My position had always been that it's over a billion dollars. It is over a billion dollars. It is a complex and expensive project by itself, and it's convoluting this entire bridge replacement process. I think it's important to mention to our Secretary of Transportation, just to highlight it. And then the last sentence that I would really urge you to consider, we look forward to seeing the bridge replaced and additional crossings planned under your leadership. You know, it's just a nod to his leadership. And the fact that, I'm hoping at least three of us think that he should pay attention to additional crossings, not just replacing the bridge, it's important. It's just as important. We're 20 years behind scheduling and planning and moving forward on designs for additional corridors. A light rail could be an additional corridor, and they could put that in a tunnel. There's lots of options, and where we're heading right now is bloated, it's excessively complicated, and excessively expensive, and that's why they're arguing so strenuously for additional tolling. So anyway, I would like to see a letter signed. I am happy to sign your letter if you don't want to make any of the adjustments that I am suggesting.
And I'm happy to sign yours if we go back up to the third paragraph and just take out that last sentence where reference to light rail and planning for additional crossings and yada, yada, just be omitted. And then I would be happy with the remainder as well as you. So we've got two ways to go, I think, on that, with just the slightest bit of adjustment. Other comments from council?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of things. My concern all along has been that this was a request to support a grant application, and that in adding additional issues takes away from that support. So I would agree with this letter, just omitting the third paragraph altogether, but I would support the last line that includes bridge replacement and additional crossings planned under your leadership. I think it's a good line. And then I believe we agreed to have a work session to bring us all up to speed with where things were left off in the planning for the third bridge. And I think if we want to develop advocacy strategy for the third bridge, that could be done independent of this letter.
So I would say let's remove the third paragraph completely, and then I think we have the support for going forward. There is not the emphasis on funds being used for the crossing, a third crossing, et cetera, and there is not the reference to light rail, so that I think would come very close to incorporating our views and removing those that were of concern. Is there agreement with that?
I agree, Madam Chair.
Chair?
Yes.
So it's kind of hard here, I'm working in my car. So is there a way that we can clarify exactly what the entire text would be? Because I think that I'm supportive of what the last two suggestions were, which is to remove that third paragraph, but I just want to make sure that that is actually what I'm thinking is happening.
You know, there is a way to show the whole thing, but actually, it's a two-page document, and both of those pages are on the monitor right now. I'm not sure how to make it more visible for you, you know, as you look at the content.
Yeah, I can only see one document.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Counselor, I'm not sure house staff could do that. Are there other comments from council? Anyone else willing to support the idea that has two supporters so far?
I would just mention to Glenn that the edits with red were emailed to him, so he should be able to pull that up on his iPad or phone.
So I guess clarifying here, if I'm looking, because I received two different documents, I received what I believe is Chair Bowerman's original suggestions, and then I received what I believe is Councilor Mevage's. Councilor Mevage's is much more extensive in terms of the changes. So we suggesting taking Councilor Mevage's as written, but eliminating the paragraph that's about transportation studies, third crossing, and light rail?
If that is the third paragraph, yes.
Okay, and then there was something about a change at the end as well.
I don't believe that a change is needed there. I've already made the change and acknowledged our interest in working with the secretary.
Okay, I believe I can support that. I'm pretty confident in what I'm putting together here.
Okay, thank you. Well, that would make three of us. Is there anyone who really, really objects that we should hear from? Okay, hearing no one there, why don't we go ahead then, as defined in this discussion, Kathleen?
Yes, we will go ahead and delete that third paragraph, and to all councillors, signature's on there. One quick question, though, the last sentence of the document does refer to also additional crossings planned. Since you removed that portion in the main document, do you want to remove it out of that sentence?
I think it's okay to keep that.
Keep it, okay. Okay, we will get it finalized and sent out. Thank you.
Thank you. New business. Is there any? Counselor reports.
I have something. I would just like to let everyone know that this Sunday is the last day of the county fair. I went last Saturday, had a lot of fun. And if you want to see and meet the next generation of farmers, I would encourage you to attend this Saturday, the Junior Livestock Auction, and it will give you great hope for the future.
And bid.
Work session requests. There are two. First is the capital improvement plan. Kathleen?
Yes, so the Parks Department and Public Works is requesting 30 minutes to go over the draft Parks and Land's Capital Improvement Plan for 2024 through 2029. This plan needs to be adopted prior to the budget process, so they're looking at adding that one. It's just basically going to be adjusting to reflect new timelines, priority changes, and whatever the feedback council provides during that work session.
30 minutes is not a long time. Are there substantive changes that are major?
Not that I'm aware of, but we'll find out during the work session. No, I got to know.
No, okay, then 30 minutes might very well be adequate. I support that. Others? Yes?
Yes.
Very good. 5.2, Rural Event Centers Task Force.
Yes, so this is a follow-up from discussion with council. April's been looking at the Rural Events Center Task Force, and we just wanted to have 10 minutes with council, and I might put this on a council time, just in light or tie it to a council, another work session, but it's basically just looking at the formation of a task force to get input from the community on this. She just wants to make sure it's in line with what council's requesting as they move forward with looking at that code.
I would support that. I've been communicating with some of the wineries and farmers who are interested in this, and I think a task force would provide a transparent process, and public could get engaged with that.
I have no objection, having also been communication fairly regularly with some of the individuals involved. So that's a yes, Kathleen.
Thank you.
Policy issues. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Counselor Marshall.
Thank you. I wanted to suggest a possible work session sometime in the future that has, I've been hearing from some of my constituents related to public benefit rating system. This was, this is a program, it's budget neutral, that would provide those who have rural, open-space land, it would evaluate the benefit to the public based on what they're doing with their land. Right now, it's a blanket, everybody gets the same reduction in the property taxes. There was work that the county assessor had done before COVID, really, I think there was a committee that met for about a year and really developed a rating system, so there was some momentum behind it, and then I think everything just came to a halt with COVID. But I think in the rural community, for those that have rural lands, it could serve as an incentive for people to do more by way of environmental improvement on their land. So it'd be good to just see where that got left off and what the interest might be, and picking it back up again.
So, Madam Chair, I would like to recharacterize something that was just said, but also say, I am in support of having a work session. When this first came up, COVID didn't kill it. It didn't pause it, it didn't stop it. The pandemic had nothing to do with it. When we received the presentation, it was just so, it wasn't understandable. And so the council rejected it, basically, because I don't think even the presenters did a very good job of articulating what the program would do to county finances, how it would benefit preserving open spaces. It was just, I want to say it was like a 60 to 80-page PowerPoint presentation that didn't answer any basic questions. And I don't know who had presented it, whether it was the staff or an outside organization. But in any case, it didn't die because of the pandemic. It was shelved because it just wasn't persuasive. So I'm open, though, to hearing another presentation of it, to see how we can better understand it and see if it's valued. I'd really be interested in what counties have adopted it and how it's benefited or not. So, and I don't remember that being part of the original presentation as to what other counties' experience with the program was. I don't think our assessor supports it. I don't know what the treasurer has to say about it. And then there was some additional discussion about, well, we really need to get below five-acre partials for the same tax relief. And I'm like, I don't think so. That's a nonstarter. You know, that would really kill our budget. Besides, all you're doing is, you know, we have a lot of non-conforming lots out there, and you'd just be solidifying the haves and keeping the have-nots, paying the bulk of our property taxes. So anyway, I would be supportive of another presentation if there is a third vote.
I'd just like to say thanks for that clarification. It did seem like it received a lukewarm reception from the council at that time, and I believe it was the assessor himself who was presenting the information. So, see how it goes.
Be supportive of this as well.
It sounds like picking up where it was left off historically is not the way to go. So if someone is willing to pick up the mantle and start afresh, it would be much more, I think, of interest to the council.
I'll find the prior presentation. I don't think I was privy to that, but I'll find it online first, and then send it to council, and then maybe we can talk about if you want an abbreviated version, or the assessor to come in. I can't imagine 90 slides. But, so I'll do some digging around, and we'll find that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think brevity and clarity are the highlights of a good presentation.
Policy issues.
I just have a couple items. One, I just want to thank Amber and the jail team. They did a phenomenal job presenting to the City of Vancouver Council on the jail update, and talking about what we're doing, and where we're going, and next steps. So, and they did a meeting with other cities. So, and they've been meeting with other cities as well, the City of Battleground and other stakeholder groups. So it is much appreciated and much needed in our community as we move forward with that process. The other item I just want to bring up to council, so you're thinking about it, on next Wednesday's council time, we're going to talk about the boards and commissions a little bit. And this is in light of yesterday's discussion regarding the opioid settlement process and who will be representing council, or if council decides to have another representation. And also the jail stakeholder group that Amber and the team are leading as well, just so that we can bring that back, so you can look at your current assignments and see if there's any adjustments that you will need, like to change in order to have the necessary representation on both of those groups. So if you need a reminder on what boards and commissions you're on, we're more than happy to send that back out by email.
Thank you. Other policy issues? Okay, executive sessions. We have three that are scheduled totaling 35 minutes. Pending litigation, all three. RCW 42.30, .110, paren one, paren little i, for all three. It is 10:57. I suspect that 11:30 is a little bit too quick for us to move in and out of executive session. So let's make it 11:40. Does that sound okay?
Chair, this is Leslie Lopez. That sounds good. Thank you. And just to point out that there may be two possible after-action.
Okay. Thank you very much. This meeting is recessed until 11:40, when we come back and have the possible after-action, if that is in fact scheduled. And for sure, adjournment of council time at that point. See you then. Thank you. We are back with Clark County Council. Council time, August 9, which is a Wednesday. And we are here at 11:41. We have been in executive session, in fact, three of them. And there is a bit of reporting out to do for possible after-action. So I call on the council for any motions.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Counselor Mevige.
So I, I do have perhaps two motions. Why, okay, now we have Sue Marshall. She just joined us. So I think she has a motion to begin with.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to grant Kim Farr's request for the county to provide defense and indemnification in the lawsuit entitled Keith Harrells Latimer versus State of Washington DBA Kim Farr et al. pursuant to Clark County Code 2.97.025.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Madam Chair, I did have another motion myself. I moved to approve the proposed settlement agreement and release of all claims relating to the lawsuit entitled Robert and Stephanie Hanks versus Clark County et al. And authorize the county manager to sign the agreement on behalf of the county.
I'll second that.
And is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. The motion is passed unanimously. And let me just verify with council and staff and the counselors who are present, is there any other after-action that we need to take care of? I know of none, but I just want to check with you.
Thank you, Chair Bowerman. No other after-action.
Okay, very good. In that event, this, we're back in council time, as you know. And council time is now adjourned. Best wishes to all.